Okay, I would like to call this meeting of the Hillsborough Board of Education on Monday, August 19th, to order. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on August 15th, 2013, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May I have a roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Ms. Bogaczewski?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley? Mr. Kinst? Mrs. Lay? Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Ms. Wasson?
Here.
All right. Can everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had a few pieces of correspondence from us, two residents and one of our former employees, and we're now up to the superintendent's report. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you, Madam President. We've been very busy over the summer. In fact, each of our committees tonight are going to report on the many activities that we've been up to during these past couple of months, including a significant amount of hiring. We have close to 70, 80 new staff members that are going to be joining our district. Very excited to have them onboard. We are also in the process of completing many summer construction projects, including some paving, drainage, drainage work, painting, flooring, lots of different activities that are going on. We've also been doing a great deal of work in the area of curriculum, and we'll be reporting out on some of that tonight. But there is one thing I want to highlight that's on the board's agenda, and that's accepting quite a significant donation this evening from the Triangle HSA for their playground. This donation is in excess of $60,000, and we greatly appreciate all the fundraising, all the efforts that they have put into this project. We are asking that the board consider accepting the construction contract as well as the donation, and we can get this play yard ready to go, get some shovels in the ground and get working on it. We do have some people from Triangle School who are representing Triangle HSA, if you wouldn't mind standing and being recognized. Let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you so much. Thank you again, and that's all I have, Madam President.
Okay. And thank you on behalf of the board for all of your work, and frankly, to all the HSAs who work very, very hard to raise money to help our schools. Our next item would be approval of the minutes. We have July 22nd, 2013 executive session minutes. May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Damon, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Now we have the July 22nd, 2013 regular meeting minutes. May I have a motion? Thank you, Twiyan, and a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chris. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're rolling. Okay, any new business? Any new business? We'll take the public first.
New business.
One, two, three, seeing none. Any new business from the board? Lorraine? Dr. Wasson?
I just wanted to let everybody know that another, two HSAs have joined, the Otten Road School HSA and the Middle School HSA have joined together to put out a discount card with 36 vendors on it, and it's available by, from any of the officers and a few other choice people who are selling them. But it has 36 Hillsborough businesses, and they sell for $10 apiece, and they hope to raise about $10,000 to $15,000 for the two schools to do other great projects like-
Yeah, it's a great card, and everybody's encouraged to support our HSAs. Anything from anybody else? I would just like to mention that back-to-school nights are on our website now. If anybody wants to plan ahead and calendar when your children's back-to-school nights are, they are on our website. Tom, who couldn't be with us tonight, also asked me to seek a date from board members for our self-evaluation and goal-setting process for 2013-14, and I would just like to throw out, would people like to consider the alternate Monday in the month of September, the one in which we don't already have a board meeting for that purpose?
I think that sounds like a reasonable proposition. I think we've had trouble in the past getting a long meeting, so better to have two that we can keep a little shorter and fill those other Mondays.
Okay. Any other?
No, we had two meetings in September, don't we?
I can't hear you.
We do. We have two meetings already, you mean the-
Right, the one in between.
Right.
Is that good for folks?
What?
Yes.
What's going to happen at this meeting? Just in brief.
We're going to discuss our self-evaluation, and we're going to set some goals for next year.
Are we going to conduct this ourselves, or are we going to have assistance?
Well, that's up to the board. You know, if you think it would be valuable to bring in the NJASBA, we could do that. I just, you know, we've done it both ways in the past.
Okay.
So-
September 16th is as good as any for me right now.
September 16th? Okay, we've accomplished that. I can't believe it, okay.
Judy?
We have to try to get somebody. It might be too soon.
Right. That would be every Monday. Okay, well, why don't we do the 16th, and then we can figure if we need a second one? Okay? Moving along, we have on the calendar tonight, public input on district policies and regulations requiring annual review. Just to be clear, these policies are of longstanding. Most of them are several or many years old. We are just required by statute to review these on an annual basis, and tonight we are looking at the entire list of those policies. So, if there's any member of the audience that has a comment about any of these policies, the board scrutinized them thoroughly at the time that they were originally passed, and nothing particularly new is in any of the content of these policies. So, is there any public comment on any of our policies requiring annual review? Seeing none, moving right along. Committee reports. Chris? Anyone who looks the other way gets called.
We had, we met last Thursday. It was actually a relatively short agenda, which always turns into a long meeting. We started out with a discussion of employee disciplinary action within the committee. We also then had a review from Dr. Schiff about the hiring and vacancies for the year. We reviewed what, where the openings were and what we expect to be doing. We ended up, I believe my numbers may be off from, if you've done more hiring since then, Dr. Schiff, but we had 92 positions filled, and there were 12 more remaining to be filled at that time. This is actually a very high number for this late in the process, and that is creating a little bit of an administrative burden in the district office. So, we did discuss adding some time for some clerical staff to get coverage of all the issues that will have to be taken care of to get those new teachers online. Since they need to be into all the systems before the training starts, it would be very tough to get that done with the hours that were already there. So, there's, I believe, an item on the action agenda tonight to approve extended hours for staff in the district office to help get those new teachers online. We also reviewed the projections for class sizes and sections. We were off by about, I believe, half a teacher out of a total of 200, so it's actually pretty accurate. Unfortunately, we were short a half, so there will be a small impact, you know, in terms of monetarily to, beyond what we had projected, but I don't believe that will be a significant issue. And that was all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pulsofer. Ms. Lay, would you like to provide the education committee report?
Okay, so we met last Thursday, and we went, we had a few textbooks to approve, and I'm happy to state that the AP History textbooks, not only, you know, were carefully chosen by the committee, but because there's new online material and we're switching over, the publisher provided some, these books that students can use to study for the AP History exam. So, I think that's a very good deal that we got. And, so mainly, the textbooks, well, the textbooks that we reviewed are in, up for the full board approval tonight. And then, we also discussed some remaining issues from previous education committee meetings, and Dr. Antounis explained that Lorraine Borick will be giving us new language for, or recommendations for the 5331, the management of life-threatening allergies in schools. And as a result of discussing that, Dr. Schiff agreed that any policies and regulations that are reviewed as of this year will be put onto the website. Now, policies are already on the website, but we found that the regulations were very useful for us to understand, and therefore, it would be useful for families as well. And so, like, for example, Regulation 5519, which is dating violence at school, was so helpful to, it would be very helpful to students. So, we are now going to be placing that on the website, so it's more accessible to students and families. Then, we also went, we also reviewed a policy, number 2361, which will, we updated it for, to include language about privacy of families when they're using the school network. And I don't, I think there was one follow-up that we needed.
Yeah, I do have a follow-up on that. There was discussion at the committee about a new law that went into effect rather recently, that any time a school district gives a computer to a student for learning, but also allows them to take it home, that we have to put language on the permission slip indicating that the district would not turn on the device remotely to either videotape or record information while the child is at home. This legislation is entitled the Big Brother legislation, or the anti-Big Brother legislation, in order to inform the community that the district would not use the technology for any other way than to enhance and enrich the instructional environment. Now, I did speak with Mr. Handler about the implications of delaying the signup until the day after the second reading of this, of the policy that you referenced. Turns out that we, the sign-off sheet is a different sign-off sheet. It's not connected to policy, and it indicates everything that we needed to indicate, so we don't need to wait. We can actually get it approved without being in violation of any policy. It was an internal document, not that they signed for the one-to-one initiative, that was specific to the one-to-one initiative. However, once the board goes through the second reading, then the AUP policy, the updated AUP policy, will need then to be signed by all of the students.
And the committee noted that parents can use these forms very effectively, so when you get the form from your student, it would be very useful for you to review it with your student, your child, and say, these are rules that you need to abide by to use these devices, and it's a way of partnering with the school district and having some leverage with your children handling electronic devices. Then, we, I think that's, that's pretty much, okay, we also did one follow-up on the cafeteria, and, I don't know, can you, do you remember what?
Sure. Go ahead. At a previous meeting, we had discussed the POS system and whether some of the items could be excluded from being, parents could choose whether they would be, they could exclude their children from purchasing some of the items, and Ms. Major went back and looked, reviewed the system, and was going to speak to the cashiers about the implications of implementing something like that, and then she was going to come back to the committee. So, that was where that stood.
Yeah, in addition, if there are any changes that will be made, that they would also go through the operations committee, okay? Just so you, a heads up, a heads up to you.
I appreciate a good turf, Warren, as much as the next guy.
Yeah.
Now, now.
And we did review the accomplishments of the education committee meeting, but I just want to focus on what action items we had today. I think there might be some venue to share with the public what each committee does, so that you know how committee work impacts the policies and direction that the school district takes.
Is that it?
Yep, that's it.
Okay. Mr. Gillette, operations.
Thank you. Mrs. Haas, operations committee met last Wednesday. We had a number of items for discussion, and many of them will be reflected in action items on tonight's agenda, including a resolution for the state ROD grant application. As you know, this is, the ROD grant program is something that has been dormant for a number of years. You may recall that about three years ago, we began depositing money in a capital reserve account with the idea that, which I stated in the, we all stated at the time, that if, the best use of that money would be if the ROD grant program came back into being, we would be able to leverage the money we'd saved in the capital reserve to do some projects at a great, at a far greater cost than we can normally afford. So, the way the ROD grant works is, you make an application, architect will make an application to the state, and if the application is approved, the state will pay 40% of the cost of the project. The project have to, has to be repairs, mostly repairs to the structure of buildings, not adding a new wing, not putting in a swimming pool, nothing like that. Things that are necessary for your buildings to stay in good repair. When we took a look at this, combined between their 40% and our 60%, I believe the number was about somewhere around $3.5 million worth of projects that could be done. So, we had our architect and our building professionals take a look at where we, which projects would have the greatest chance of being approved in the application, and also where we had the greatest need. It just so happens that it's nothing really sexy, if I could use the word sexy at a board meeting. It happens to be all roof projects, roof replacement projects at the high school, the middle school, the intermediate school where we are now, and the Hillsborough Elementary School. Those four schools were identified as having at least some partial roof replacement projects that could, we could do. So, that's a good, that's good news that we've got through this process. We don't have the good news that we got the grant yet, but I believe architect has indicated that he's been very successful in the past when this program was previously in operation, and he has, he has, feels there's a great likelihood of success for this application. So, that was the ROD grant. You'll see it on tonight's agenda to approve the resolution for that. We are, the second project is the, where we talked about most of last year and beginning prior to this year was the ESIP projects. Those are the energy savings projects that you can do, where you can pay for any project that's going to return savings from reduction of energy costs, and you paid off later. We've been through that a bunch of times, but what we're up to now is, we're up to the part where we decided earlier this year that we would use an outside energy services company to shepherd this process for us, and we're, we put a bid out for that, an RFP, and we're waiting now there for bids to come back in, is that correct, Mr. Mahmood? Waiting for bids to come back in from ESCO, energy service companies, and they will bid, they will have a proposal. It will not be just entirely reflected on just the lowest cost. There will be a rubric which our architect will design, so we can judge which company to choose, because they may offer other things, you know, certain, every proposal's going to be different. It's not just going to be like, you know, painting the room and who can do it cheapest. It's going to be what's in the proposal. So, there'll be a rubric, and our staff will be able to go over that and choose that RFP, and that'll come, come up later, later this year. Of the summer projects, we had a little few snafus, if I can also use the word snafu at a board meeting. The, some of the tiles that went down at the high school in one of the classrooms were mismatched, so we had to have the contractor go back and take up some tiles. That was a little to do there. And also, our contractor doing the paving at the Woodford School inadvertently knocked down one of our new light poles, so they're responsible for going back and fixing that. No, no cost to us, they'll fix all that up. So, those are kind of like, you know, it's all going to be fixed, so those are kind of silly ones. The one that, and the one that's not so silly is the Amsterdam School, which we continue to talk about. Initially, it was going to be a complete paving project, and you heard me raise my voice a little bit at the last meeting about the Delaware and Rite Canal Commission, how they got involved, and our paving project is off. We scaled it down to just be a, being a drainage project, but the, as of last week, the contractor had not begun the project yet, so our, our big boy over here, Mr. Mahmood, got on the phone, I think, today and got them started, so they did come, get out today to start working on it. So, we really anticipate that the drainage project will be completed well before school starts, but it's something that we'll have to keep an eye on, and Dr. Schiff is going to keep an eye on it, because this is something that should have been done a month ago, or at least should have been started a month ago, and should be wrapping up about now, but really is just getting started now. So, it's just something to bear in mind, to look at. The strategic plan as far as facilities goes is all wrapped up in the ESIP. So, really, there is no strategic plan, there's not really any strategic plan items beyond the ESIP. So, when we reviewed the strategic plan, it was mostly just where we are with the ESIP process. And then, the, I've talked for a while now, so I'll talk about, I got a bunch of things, but maybe I'll talk about one more, one more thing. I'll just give it up one more. You heard Dr. Schiff speak in his superintendent's report about the donation that we're going to receive from the Triangle School HSA. This is the first implementation of a new process that Dr. Schiff has designed, along with, I think, our attorney and the other professionals. A process whereby the HSAs will make a direct donation to the, to the district for the specific purpose of the project which they intend to be completed. Now, this isn't like, for like, you know, buying something for like a classroom, like, I don't know, like supplies or something, or a donation of something small. This is for donation where it involves a construction project, installation of something in the classroom, or something, something along those lines. Before, we'd had a little mishmash of, it was being done all different ways. Sometimes the HSA would be engaging in the process, really hands-on with contractors and other things, and other times, they would more just hand it off to us, but our attorney advises, and we've come up with the plan, that we're always going to do it this way now, that we're going to have input, the HSA will receive input from the principal on what project is, would be acceptable for the school board, presented to, I guess, Mr. Mahmood, who was ever going to take a look at that, and Dr. Schiff, and then make a presentation of the, like we're going to see here tonight, of the, of the monies. So, is that it? Is that all we did? And Mrs. Haas? You were on the phone?
Yeah.
Oh, one last thing, I have to, I'm sorry, I have to do one more. I thought I was done, but I have to do one more. As you know, for about two years now, we, it's been about two years since we changed our board to a three-committee board. We used to have eight committees, and the board went to three committees, and Mr. Kinst had made a proposal several months ago that we'd think about having a fourth committee. And if I can just sort of paraphrase, his, his initial ideas were that a lot of the things that come before committees are sort of pigeonholed into a certain, or shoehorned, I should say, into a committee, where they don't really fit in that committee necessarily. The example that I like to use is the random drug testing, sort of went to education committee, or there's, there's more than that. Some of the policies we see today that are annual review, a sexual harassment policy might not be to any particular committee, but it's an important policy. So, for idea, for things like policy, for communications, and for board self-evaluation and board goals, and for some other issues, we, we might look into having a fourth committee, call it maybe the governance committee. This is, that was Tom's idea for a name, which is fine. So, we had some specific ideas, we talked about it at our meeting, we're going to, and Tom actually wrote up a, how the policy would look. He wrote that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's going to go to the other committees, so at your next committee meetings, you can also take a look at that, and, and review it and see, have your input into it and see if you'd like it or not, and where we might be able to go with that. All right, now I'm done.
Thank you very much. I would just like to say this has been a very busy summer, and I'd like to acknowledge our senior staff for their role in all of the things that have been done. I know Dr. Antounis has been really busy with curriculum work and common assessments and professional development and all the stuff that everybody in the public takes for granted, but really is a lot of volume and a lot of difficult work. And Ayman has been busy working on all of these wonderful projects, which we've been very active in, as well as dealing with the day-to-day bills and keeping the, you know, people paid. And of course, his able sidekick, Jerry, has been very valuable in that regard as well. And I'd also like to acknowledge Guy Whitlock, our new personnel person, because the resumes, which are attached to our, our agendas, show that we're reaching into very, very talented people that we're bringing into the district, and people with very interesting skill sets, and of course, all the certifications, of course, that are necessary, but that we're getting a lot of very talented people coming into the district. As sad as we are for the people who are leaving, it's nice to see that we've had good people applying to Hillsborough, and that people still consider Hillsborough a very good place to work. So, I'd just like to thank our senior staff, and of course, Dr. Schiff, who leaves it, who leads it all. Anyway, with that, we're up to the public comments on the action agenda.
Actually, can we go back to committee reports?
Oh, we didn't do, we didn't do a special on that.
Oh, sorry. Have at it. Chris?
In going through my notes here, and I'm glad that Greg has gotten permission to use the word inadvertently in a, at a board meeting, I inadvertently left out that also due to the significantly large number of hires, there is included in the action tonight is also additional time for one of the tech trainers to provide additional, the training is also required for those extra teachers.
Yeah, great. Twiyan?
Question?
Sure.
Now that the ESIP is increasing in importance, I wonder if maybe at our September board evaluation meeting, we could discuss, or we could talk to each other about what is a priority? So, for example, because you said that the different companies may have different options for us to consider, if as a board, we know what our priorities are, it'd be easier to narrow down. Like, for, for example, I think, I mean, I'm just giving an example, but I think that make- making the buildings more comfortable for teachers and students, for example, the second floor at, at this school, or the, the science wing at the high school. Those, to me, are priorities because if you can't, if you're in a very uncomfortable learning condition, it's very hard to learn. So things like that, if we could discuss maybe at our, at our board, that I think that would make it easier for us to, to pinpoint what is important to our school district and then which ESIP we would choose amongst all of the options that we have.
I agree. We had, we started a discussion on some of those topics at the operations committee meeting. Dr. Schiff did mention the comfort factor at the, at the second floor of the two schools. And also, Dr. Schiff also mentioned, I'm speaking for you now, Dr. Schiff, about the great value that he sees in other, and the possibility of other behavioral changes at this, for, at the school. So I can see your eyes light up there over there, Mrs. Lee. You did say that, right? Behavioral changes. You had maybe done some reading or something about that and you...
Sure. Actually, our energy audits seem to indicate that we have the potential for significant electrical savings just through various conservation measures. So Mr. Mahmood is leading a district-wide committee called the Green Committee, where he's going to examine this and make specific recommendations back to the board for implementation in 1415. I, I do want to clarify, I, air conditioning, I don't view as a comfort. I, I view air conditioning as providing an environment that is conducive to learning, that when children are in environments, and I'm not talking about 95, 100 degrees where that's obvious. I'm talking about environments that are in the 70s with high humidity, low 80s, where you are losing instructional efficacy. And this is a strong concern that I've had. I've, I've articulated it before to the board and to the public. And I would encourage us to strongly consider using the ESIP monies, which again, are monies that are paid for with the energy savings that is generated. The law allows us to use 10% of that for actually energy-consuming type of activities like air conditioning. So I hope that we can have that, that conversation. I think it's in the best interest of our kids. Thank you.
Any other questions, Dr. Swasan?
I can do it now, or I can do it as part of the action?
Go for it.
Okay. Two things as part of the operations committee, Greg, not to pick on you.
No, I like it. Pick away.
The, the one question that I have, and maybe it's not for you, is Otten Road School is 13, 14 years old. Why are we talking about replacing a roof here? It seems way too early for us to, are there issues?
We had, and I'm going to bounce this off of Mr. Mahmood in just a moment, but we have from our new architectural firm, Specialists in Roofing. They actually walked the roof. They were up on top and taking a look at it. Maybe you can comment further.
Yeah, I think, I think, Dr. Swasan, one of the things that they noticed is that there are some deficiencies in the way the membrane is currently on this particular building, even though it's new. Clearly, one of the things that we looked at is warranties. I think that's what we're, we're thinking. We, we don't know at this point what it covers, what it doesn't cover. We just know that, you know, in the priority list, we know that this is in failure mode. And their high recommendation is to, to do, to redo it. And if we don't, we're going to continue to, to diminish what we got. So I think we have to protect the investment, redo that, but by the same token, kind of look to see where we're at. Because I agree with you. I think you're looking at whatever, 13, 14 years, it's roughly, you know, it's not, you know, brand new, but it's certainly, the lifespan of these should be a lot longer in my opinion. But that doesn't mean that we're not going to revisit that part of it, but the actual roof is, is in failure.
Thank you. Well, then, judging from that, we got a great deal out of Triangle and Woodburn's roof that lasted, what, 40, you know, 40 years before we had to replace them? And then the, the other item that I had, question that I had was with respect to the à la carte items for SEDEXO. I noticed a range of items for ice cream being from 60 cents to $1.25. Does that mean we will no longer be offering the $1.85 premium ice cream at the middle school? That that is not an option?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
Great. And then the other question on there is regard to soda. I thought soda was being removed from the buildings, or is that still offered at the high school? And I know Snapple's still available places.
I'm not certain.
Is it only diet soda, or is it...
We can, we can question and come back to do with the answer.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just to help other board members, the operations committee gets photos. Sometimes we get, we see photos of the roof and how the ice is formed and the damage and how it doesn't allow for the roof to work properly. So that's, I mean, it's something that to consider to provide to other board members so they can see why we are assessing the roofs. This is really amazing, but we do have to repair these roofs.
Well, certainly, I'm not arguing against the repair if it's necessary. I wasn't even questioning if it was necessary. I was questioning why is it necessary? And if it was warranted from what the time that it was built. I think it's also something we need to consider, that we don't want to do this every 15 years. So there has to be something we can do to, to prevent, if we have to do work, to prevent this from happening in another 15 years. Commercial roof these days should last, last 40 to 50 years. So, you know, we should be able to get that, we should be able to engineer it so that we can get close to that lifespan rather than a third of it.
I'm not, I'm not exactly sure, but Mr. Mahmood, but is, was the active leaking that we have in this building, is that on the newer section? I mean, that this, not, this building isn't even all 14 years old. Some of it's only 10 years old. And sometimes we have problems where an original building and a new building meet. This has been an ongoing problem over the years. And all, I think all of our schools, all of our elementary schools, every building we have, I think, maybe except for Amsterdam, has an add-on piece. And sometimes those add-on pieces is where the, we get the leak in between those add-on or, you know, when something isn't designed as a whole all at once, homogeneous design, and then sometimes you get problems.
I think it's the whole.
So I, I am, I'm sorely disappointed that it was a building that some parts of it are 10 years old, already having major roof replacements, so, much so that we put it as part of our rod grant. But that's the way, that's how it is.
Frankly, I'm encouraged by the prospect that we're not going to wait till the roof fails. And many more of our school buildings have been, you know, 25 or more years with the same roof and a couple of years with waste baskets in the hallways. So I'm sort of glad that we have the rod grant opportunity so that we could be proactive and get to this before it becomes a bigger problem. So are we finished with committee report comments? And can we now move on to action agenda comments from the public? Any comments? We've got about 50 items on our agenda tonight. Can we have one comment from somebody? Going, going?
They're waiting for a whole business.
Gone? Okay. Any comments on the agenda from the board will be discussed as we get to the items. Okay, with that, I'll give the gavel over to Dr. Schiff.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve travel-related expenses, approve the curriculum writing as listed, approve stipends for the Princeton Quest/ Rider Connect Ed 2013 Summer Institute, approve staff members attending the ELA Summer Institute for 2013, approve the common assessment development as listed, approve staff for the ELL Summer Enrichment Program, disposal of textbooks, approve the mandatory inquiry and project-based learning training for our science curriculum writing, approve overnight trips, approve the following textbooks as listed, and approve the social studies curriculum as listed as well and reported out of committee tonight. Approve the common assessment development and pacing, approve regulations required adoption by the Board of Education, including 5510 Dating Violence at Schools, 8441 Care of Injured and Ill Persons, and 8451 Control of Communicable Diseases. Approve the new and revised policies, including tutoring services, assignment of pupils, school district provided technology devices to staff members, school district provided technology devices to pupils, care of injured and ill persons, as well as control of communicable diseases. That's all I have.
Great. May I have a motion for items A1 through 14 on the education agenda?
On behalf of the education committee, I ask the full board to approve items A1 through A14.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion on any of these agenda items? One, two, three, seeing none. Roll call.
Thank you. Ms. Bogaczewski?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Swasan?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Rep. D, Human Resources.
I ask for the board's approval of the following motions that I'm making under the area of human resources to approve the resolution creating an instructional assistant position, approve the resignations as listed. I, I do want to highlight that the service that Matt Mingle has provided to the school district over the past few years is an outstanding supervisor of social studies and our gifted and talented program in the district. He did an extraordinary job. We will miss him. He is moving on to Madison Public School System where he will, will be the director of curriculum and instruction, and we wish him only the very best. There is a termination that we're requesting approval of, rescinding of contracts as listed, change of contracts, change and transfer in assignments, leaves of absences, appointments of teacher. And we do have a correction under 8 dot 1. You can see the music teacher, Gabrielle, who's the second in that section, is a .41 music teacher. I ask that we change that to .4 instead of .41. There was a typo there. All of these teachers are actually being asked to be affirmed. They were offered contracts, long-term substitutes, the data analyst, analyst, lunch aid, coaches, substitutes. We do have a duplication on the backup for AINM B dash 8 dot 6 for a substitute secretary. Isabella was listed twice, so we will correct that as part of the, the minutes. Also, we're asking you to approve the turnkey teacher trainers for the 2013-2014 school year, as well as extra period coverage, summer camp, summer camp stipends adjustments, approve the following lunch aids during an in-service day, approve the revised workdays for the extended school year program, approve the revised pay rates for the extended school year program, and approve child study team staff summer evaluation pay as listed. Group changes, approve the one-to-one pilot teachers to attend the orientation nights for parents and, and families, approve the hourly contracted employees as listed, approve the resolution pursuant to NJAC 6A colon 23A dash 3 dot 1 Superintendent Mayor bonus for qualitative goals for the 2012-2013 school year. That's all I have.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the Human Resources Agenda, items B1 through B19?
On behalf of the Human Resources Committee and our special guest, Dr. Swasan, this past week, I will move that the board approve items B1 through B19 as listed and as corrected by Dr. Schiff.
Thank you very much. May I have a second? Thank you, Deena. Any discussion about any of the personnel items?
Got a timeout going.
Let me just, Mr. Whitlock, why don't you make the clarification from, from your microphone so that the community can hear?
Clarification under B14, revised salary, revised salary adjustment. Ms. Lamanna appears under occupational therapist, as well as physical therapist. She should be deleted from occupational therapist.
So this was an occupational slash physical therapist, where she's only a physical therapist. It appears on the backup to that particular motion, and the correction will be made as part of the minutes.
Thank you very much. Okay, where were we? That was comments, right? Do we have any other comments on the Personnel or Human Resources Agenda? No? Okay, then I'll take a roll call.
Troy, Ms. Bogaczewski?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Swasan?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great. Now we're up to the operations agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations to approve the monthly financial reports, monthly bills lists, line item transfers, transportation contracts as listed, to approve the resolution awarding the contract for custodial grounds and plan to operations and management services to the Pritchard Group, approve the agreement with the Somerset County Ed Services Commission as listed, approve transportation contract renewals as listed, approve the joint transportation agreement with Camden County Ed Services Commission, approve settlement agreement and, and release, to amend the bylaws of the New Jersey School Board Insurance Group, to amend, to approve the amendment to the SEDESCO Food Services Management Contract as listed, approve the revised cafeteria à la carte price list, and approve the resolution for roof replacements and regular operating district or rod grant applications as reported out of committee, approve the out of, out of district placements for the 2013-2014 school year, and approve the resolution regarding the Triangle Playground Transfer of Contract and Donation of $63,000. Approve the additional donations from Hillsborough Township of 25 metal artwork display stands and, and as listed above, the Triangle Home and School Association donation for the playground.
Okay. May I have a motion for Operations Agenda, items C1 through C16, please?
On behalf of the Operations Committee, I recommend that we approve C1 through C16.
Thank you very much. May I have a second?
Second.
To you. Thank you. And any comments, discussions, questions? Dr. Swasan?
I just found a typo. Well, it, because it's a, it's a typo that actually means something. Under C11, the SEDEXO Food Services Management Contract, the very last line before you get to C12, it says, or any other, by $1, and it has in quotation marks, $41. I think the four is the, the dollar sign on the, on the keyboard.
Yes.
So it's really $1, $1, not $1, $41.
Good catch, Greg.
We'll make the changes.
It's the conversion rate that gets you every time.
Okay. Now, would you like to make?
I actually meant to ask this before about the à la carte price list. It says student milks are 65 cents, but adult milk, milk is 55 cents. Why are we charging the adults 10 cents less than the students?
Is it a different milk?
Is it different milk? That would be a, that would be a simple answer. I'm sorry. I have a full...
I don't know.
Sour milk, cereal.
Sour?
Day old. Care of the comment.
Right. And they only get a 10 cent discount?
It's, it's, it's just a question. I meant to actually address it in the mail.
Is it a different vendor? I saw, I saw that too.
You push the shift button on the, on the typewriter, what's it, under five? I don't know. We'll have to see.
We'll find out.
We will check it out.
Okay, thank you. And then the other...
Be careful what you ask for. You may just cost all these people here in the blue shirts 10 cents.
No. Well, I'll, I'll get $1. I'll cover it for the year. And the other comment that I had to make was with regard to the HSA donation. I know the ladies are here. They've worked very hard. I don't think anybody's going to have a problem accepting the donation, but I wanted to recognize again the process that they went through in raising the funds, coming to the board, asking for partnership, for something that I think was very similar to something we were willing to fund. And they have since scaled it back to accommodate the funding available. So, you know, going back, I guess, and doing more work to actually make it something that they could do by themselves for the school. So I wanted to acknowledge... So, I wanted to acknowledge that, you know, again. So, thank you.
Okay. Yes, Chris?
I'd just like to add to what Larry was saying, I'd like to commend the, the Triangle School HSA, but more so than that, I've been fortunate to have my two sons spend their entire academic life in the Hillsborough School District. We have a great district, we have great teachers, we have great staff throughout the district. But the other thing we have is a community that has consistently pitched in when, you know, budgetarily and financially in this state, things have always been tight. And watching my kids go from Sunny Mead to Otten Road, to the middle school, and then on to the high school, it just amazes me at how often the community steps up to, to deliver things that as a, as a school district, we would love to provide, but sooner or later comes down to pinching the pennies and making those decisions. And to see the community step up, and this, to me, is just an amazing, another example, $63,000 from an HSA, to help provide something that unfortunately, we were not able to do ourselves. But to see the community step up at all the levels, is very encouraging to me, that this district is, this district and this community have their hearts in the right place. So, thank you very much.
Love those volunteers. They're really the heart of our, our district, along with our teachers. Okay, so, are we up to a vote? Are there any other comments? I just need to separate items C3, C6, and C14. So, I'll take a vote, a roll call first, on items C1 and 2, 4 and 5, 7 through 13, and 15 through 16. So, roll call first.
Sure. Ms. Bogaczewski?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Postifer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. And then, a roll call on items C3, C6, and C14.
Do we need another motion for those?
Excuse me?
I think we need a motion.
Yes.
We need a motion.
Oh, sorry. Okay, may I have a motion?
So moved?
I'm second.
Thank you.
Did you want to separate it in different piece?
It's perfect.
Okay.
Yes.
Good. Roll call.
Sure. Ms. Bogaczewski?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Abstained.
Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Postifer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Very good. We are up to old business. Is there any old business from the board? No? Okay. And is there any old business from the public? We're going home. Time for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Have a very nice end of the summer. School starts three weeks from tonight. What can I tell you? Enjoy the rest of your summer. Good night, everybody.